Good evening.
Good evening.
There we go. All right, Carrie, are you? Are you in the house?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, well, I see that it is seven oh one. So, and we have a quorum of three. For this, so I'm gonna call the zoning board of appeals to order at seven oh one. And. I will follow the agenda, which I believe has. Public comment first. We have any public comment. I. Don't see anybody but board members and those involved with the case, so. Gonna move on to education and guidance. And. I don't see anybody here for education and guidance either, so. We'll go right to the main event.
Moving right along.
That's the nice thing about the zoning board, we get right to it.
Excellent.
So. This is a special permit application by Bruce. At Bruce F. Parkin?
E.
E, okay, Bruce E. Parkin. And what we're gonna do tonight is. Is open the public hearing, and I will do that at seven oh two. And I'll introduce it a little bit, and then I'll let Bruce. Talk about his proposal. But this is a special permit. For fifty-two Montague Road. It is a request to install a non-habitable accessory structure or shed. Within twenty-five feet, within the twenty-five-foot side setback requirement. Post shed be located approximately twenty feet from the side boundary with. With the lot F sixty-six next door. And then there's a. There's a diagram which. Goes with the application, which I imagine everyone has seen. So that's the proposal, and. The reason this is not a zoning variance, and that's what zoning boards of appeal often do. Are variances, and they're very hard to, very hard to grant. But the Chutesberry zoning carved out a little bit of a, an easier way to go with. With non-habitable accessory structures that can't meet the, any one of the side setbacks. Side front or rear, and that comes under four point two dash two. B two in our zoning bylaw. Which says, non-habitable detached or attached accessory structures which cannot meet the setback requirements of this subsection. May be allowed by special permits from the zoning board of appeals. Provided that the board finds such structures to be in harmony with the residential development in the zoning district and not detrimental to the neighborhood. So we've done a number of these. I'd say. Eight, ten, twelve of these in the last. Doing fairly frequently. So, anyway, with that introduction, I will. Ask Mr. Parkin to present his proposal.
Thank you, Jeff, I just, as all three of you, I believe, have seen the location. I located it there for several reasons, or would like to locate it there for several reasons. Number one, the flattest spot on the property closest to the house. Where I could get twenty-five feet from the line is over where my leach field is, so obviously I don't want to put it there. And I have talked with the Tumonims, not the Butters, and they don't have any objections. When I had Billy W. W. Clark out to help me lay it out. We realized the amount of fill that would be required to bring it in. To the, to meet the twenty-five-foot boundary would be excessive, and then it would also locate the shed. Almost, not in the middle, but significantly into my. Existing what I call a lawn, it's weeds, but it's lawn. And it would impede my path to my garden, which you may not have seen, but is out. In the, along that property line, back behind some of those trees, there is a pathway there. To bring it out even more would block that pathway, meaning I would have to create some other road to my garden, not that hard to do, but very unpleasant. Bringing the shed out into twenty, to meet the twenty-five-foot boundary would also. Put it right in my line of sight, as I'm sitting now in my sunroom. It would protrude into the yard far too much to my liking and would block most of the view. And again, that would bring it out in line with my driveway. Which, since it's cleared all the way to the back, would make the shed more visible from the road. Which I don't think meets the town's. Desired effect. And does not affect, as a matter of fact, would, would hurt the quality of the neighborhood, in my opinion. Also, as you'll see on my application for section eight, three, three, I believe it is. Chutesberry zoning bylaws states that buildings should be placed at the edge of fields or wooded areas, that's what I'm attempting to do here. Also, eight, three, eight. States that they should not block trails or existing. Pathways, which, as I've explained, is to my garden. So in general, I think move, placing the shed. Where the plan says meets those requirements satisfies my needs much better than. Biding by the twenty-foot line boundary. And Jeff, to address your concern, I know when you were here, we talked. You said it looked like it was closer than twenty feet, and you were absolutely right, I'm totally honest here, that's why the application said approximately. Knowing W. W. Clark. Might come in and do it ahead of time, I measured it one, after your visit, and it is indeed seventeen feet. Or so, from the line, so, being totally honest with you here. I did go back and check, I know the drawing states twenty, but the application itself states approximately twenty. Which is what we had talked about with W. W. Clark before he put the pad in. So, that's my case, I hope. Since there are no objections from the Butters or the neighbors, I hope I've satisfied your requirements for the special permit.
I'll ask the members if they have any questions of you.
I think he answered the only question I had, and that was what, what was the opinion of the Butters?
Okay, yeah, Mark and Laurie have, have no objections whatsoever to the shed going where it is. As a matter of fact, it blocks my sight to their pool, so it's sort of a buffer, in that fact, for us. They have an in-ground pool.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here to, I'm here to confirm.
We'll get to you in just a second.
All right.
Any, any other questions from members to the applicant?
I really don't have any questions either, I, things looked. With the, the Butter's approval, it's fine to me.
You, you can ask them at any time, I, I do. Provide a little opportunity now, so. Now, now we get to the public, and is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Mark, you're the public.
Okay. I don't think I've ever been to a ZBA meeting, so.
My first too.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just wanted, I was just here to confirm that Bruce and I discussed, and that we're okay with the. The proposed plan for citing this, so I don't have any questions, it's just, just here to show support for Bruce's proposal.
Thank you, Mark.
And, and you are the neighbor to the north.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, I don't see any other members of the public. Now, if, if, if there are no other questions from members. I, I need to close the hearing, so that we could get on to deliberation. Because we, we need to close the hearing before we deliberate. So, members, okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, I will close this hearing at seven eleven.
Thank you, everyone.
A nine-minute hearing, that's pretty good. So now, now we move on to deliberation. I, I can start it off. Simply by saying this, this is kind of emblematic of, of these proposals and how they go, you know, there are certain site-specific reasons that. Make adhering to the side setback or any setback. Less desirable than deviating from them, putting them closer to the lot line. And generally, if it's fine with the neighbor, then usually it's, it's fine with us. In this case, the lot is very narrow, that's, that's an older lot, probably created in the seventies or.
Yes.
Or something, because it's about a hundred and twenty feet wide. Whereas lots now are two hundred and fifty feet wide, so there's, there's. Much more room to do things, whereas. Twenty-five feet into a hundred and twenty feet kind of puts you out in the middle, or close to the middle of the town, so I can understand why, why you'd want to. Why you'd want to deviate a little bit, and, and seventeen sounds about right, that's only three feet off from. What, what the application was, so if we write this up, we'll write it up to seventeen.
Thank you.
So. What the zoning board often does right now. We need to make. Once we close the public hearing, we go into a deliberation phase, which can last. Up to ninety days. And, and that, and, and by the end of ninety days, we have to have a written decision. Hand it into the town clerk. Very often, we do it much, much faster than that. What we generally don't do is. Is, is vote before we have a written decision, because what state law makes us. Do is, once we voted, taken a formal vote on this, with the ayes and nays. Then, a written decision has to be rendered within ten days, excuse me, fourteen days, so that puts us under sort of a, a time gun. What we do instead, has been our practice, is we get a sense of, of the board. Without formally voting, it's kind of an informal straw, straw vote. And then we schedule another meeting where we get together and we review a draft decision that I've written. And I've sent this decision out to you ahead of time to look at, and there might be a few conditions. There's a few standard conditions, you know, build it like you represented, it can't be any more than seventeen feet. A few things like that, but if we don't want to, if we don't want to change the project really in any way, we don't condition it too heavily. But anyway, we get a sense of the, of the board tonight. Then we agree to meet again at a time certain, and I will have a decision for. For the members and for the applicant to look at, to review, and then we'll, we'll vote that decision up and down then. Then we don't have the fourteen-day problem. So, is that?
I understand, Jeff, I have, I have a couple of questions, I mean, a, a question, I guess. I've ordered this shed and scheduled it to be here April third, is that not going to be doable? Because after this, I still have to get a building permit, is that correct?
I think you'll be long done with us by April.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
We have to pick another date. We, we can talk about dates, perhaps, if we have our calendars in front of us, and maybe agree on one tonight. And at that, at that next meeting, if the draft decision that I present is approved. Then it's transmitted to the town clerk the next day, and that begins a twenty-day waiting period. Once that twenty-day waiting period without any appeal has elapsed, then you can go right up to the building inspector for your permit.
Okay, and how long is the building permit process usually, do you know? I know it's not your department, but, do you know how long?
I believe he has to issue those within thirty days.
Thirty days, okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll check with him, but thank you.
Yes, I mean, that should get you, that should get you done well before April.
Right, thank you.
So, members, what is your sense on, on this one?
Can I just ask one clarifying question first, I know when I was visiting and Bruce, we walked back there, and you were, I think, describing that the. Actual kit, the, the, the building that's coming, doesn't correspond to the drawings? That in fact, the long access of the building is not where the doors are, as they are in the sketches? Or is on the gable end, is that, is that correct?
The sketch that I gave you shows it going the correct way.
Okay.
The long end parallel, yeah, sort of parallel to the property line. The kit, I mean, the, the shed itself, I have the option of where the double, there's a set of double doors and a regular three-foot door. I have the option of where those go.
I see.
I chose, I chose to put the double doors on the gable end, the short end, for easiest access.
Yeah, that's what I thought I understood you to say, and I just wanted to be clear, so what's facing the Tuamondman's property? That wall of the shed is, has nothing on it, or?
It has one window.
One, one window there, okay, okay.
It has T-one-eleven siding and one window. In the middle of the building.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, thanks for that clarification.
Yep, you're welcome.
Sounds nicer than a few of our town buildings.
It even has window boxes on the front facing my lane.
Yeah.
All right, so am, am I getting the sense from the members that I could write up for your consideration a favorable decision? At our next meeting?
Yes.
And I, I would say so too, I, I guess, as a, as a brand-new member to this process, I just would want to at least acknowledge that the decision we're making is largely driven. You know, by the harmony with which the building integrates into the setting, and that there is kind of. That there, there is nothing offensive regarding the neighbor, and with the neighbor's approval, it certainly. Sounds like that's not an issue at all, I, but I'm also aware that decisions we make are not just for the current resident, but for. Residents to come, so again, you know, I, I have to at least look through the lens of saying, you know, is there anything about the placement of that shed that. You know, twenty years from now, when the Tuamondmans have moved on and somebody else might be living in that house, is that an issue? And I guess I don't see that, I just want to kind of be aware that that's part of my thought process in, in looking at this.
As it should be.
Yeah.
As it should be, I understand.
And, and so, Jeff, my question really, so if the submitted diagram is a little different, does he have to correct that?
Well, the, the axis, the, the placement, the, the twelve by twenty is, is correct here, it's, it's.
Okay.
Long axis goes up and down the property line.
Yes, okay.
I believe, I, I believe her question was, do we have to change the twenty to a seventeen? Is that your question?
Yeah, that, that will be changed.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that will be noted, that it's seventeen, not twenty. The. The placement of, of the doors will also note. That, that, that's changed from the diagram, but that's the only.
I don't understand the diagram you're talking about, that has it different. The one from Clodagh Farms themselves? Oh yeah, that's from Clodagh Farms, that's their standard. Copy that they give everybody, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there'll just be a, yes.
So we're just gonna tell that the, the, the entry doors are gonna be on the gable end facing the street.
Yeah.
Which. Probably looks better, it adds a little bit of, a little detail and interest to the, to the building as it's seen from the street. So, so yeah, what, what, what we need to. Be comfortable with is that, that the board finds that such structures to be in harmony with the residential development in the zoning district and not detrimental to the neighborhood.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, and. Usually, if, if the neighbor who's the, the one affected the most by this comes in and says, says it's fine, then, then that helps us make that determination. More easily. Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to. Go off and, and, and write a decision that. And, and we have a, we have a decision form that. That I fill out on a computer and. You know, it's the same form every time, so I'll fill that out, and what I put in there is always different, but. I'll bring it back to our next meeting. So. Before we, before we adjourn, we should think about when we can meet again.
Jeff, are, are we, procedurally, do we need to actually record a vote tonight, or is it just our nods of the head and all kind of agreeing we're, we're good to go?
No, we're, tonight, we, we take a sense of the board.
Okay, it's just, yeah.
If, if we voted, we have a fourteen-day clock that starts.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
From tonight. So we generally don't like to.
Yeah.
To that clock.
Yeah.
Even though we might be within fourteen days.
I understand.
Who knows, we could have a big snowstorm, and I'll, I'll be out plowing instead of doing this, so.
Don't say that.
I think Carrie has a question there, Jeff.
Yeah, it's just a quick question, I wasn't sure if, if it was needed, but a motion to close the public hearing, I know we did that a while, like. Everyone consented to it, but I didn't know for the minutes he wanted to do. Um, an actual motion to close it.
Actually, why don't we do, why don't we do that, I, I forgot to, to do an actual motion, so at seven eleven, I. I'll move that, at seven eleven. We close the public hearing on this. Application, do I hear a second?
No, second.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Mary David?
Aye.
Don Airstuck?
Aye.
Jeff Lacy's an aye. Thanks, Carrie. This is the first one of these meetings I've ever chaired in twenty-six years, so.
You're doing good.
Really happy not being the chair.
I know the feeling, Jeff.
All right.
Did you have a date in mind that was looking good?
Well. Let me see. I could, I could throw some out that, that, where I know I don't have other meetings, and, and we could just see how they go. A week from tonight? The twelfth?
That's the COMCOM meeting.
Okay. Sixteenth is Martin Luther King Day, that's not, that's not possible, seventeenth, the Tuesday?
I'm okay with that.
As am I.
That works for me as well.
Okay. All right, so let's do a. Another ZBA meeting. Tuesday, seventeenth, seven o'clock. That works for you, Carrie? Yeah.
Yeah, that works for me as well.
Okay. All right.
There's no reason for me to be at that meeting, is there? I could if I wanted to, though.
There is, you know, there's every indication that it will, it will likely be a favorable decision for you.
Right, I understand.
But there's no, there's no guarantee.
Okay.
So, you know, usually it's best if people shadow these things a little bit and. Make sure.
Okay, I'm just curious, because I'm gonna be out of state, but, but I will, I, I can log in and zoom in and whatnot, so, okay.
Okay. So. Before we adjourn the meeting. I, I think.
I think, I think Carrie has another question there, Jeff.
Okay, all right, Carrie?
Sorry, wasn't so much of a question, but if the written. Findings of such that Lacey brings on the next meeting, if it's. Approved or whatnot, whatever happens, I can always email Bruce as well right after the meeting, so that way he knows as soon as possible.
That's great, Carrie, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
No problem.
You've got a great clerk there, by the way.
Oh, yeah. Well, she's, she's getting very good at this, great. Now all we have to do is hang on to her for a while.
Exactly.
So, members, one thing I'd like to talk about at the next meeting, and, and I'll, I'll put it on the agenda, is, is how we handle these types of cases. In general. In, in the zoning bylaw, which passed in two thousand and eight, they were written as special permits. And so that's the only way we can do these, when you have a shed or something, it doesn't need precise setback or. Only way you can do it is a special permit, so that involves. A five hundred dollar application fee, it involves. Twenty distinct steps that we have to go through, that the parties have to go through. Advertising in the paper a couple of times, posting it all over the place, sending it to other boards. It's the same process. That. A solar farm would have to go through. You know, a thirty-acre solar farm would have to essentially go through the same special permit process, same twenty steps, all the same notice. So. I'm, I'm wondering if, if there's a simpler way to do these things. I know that for. Backyard solar, people who have ground-mounted solar for their own homes. We do those as well, the zoning board, that's another popular permit that we do, but we do that through site plan review. That's a little different process, we don't have quite as much authority. But we can, we, we can alter and affect projects that way, and, and basically, we're looking at, at, you know, the same thing, that. What they're putting in the backyard isn't, isn't sticking out in somebody else's face. So I'm wondering if, if we might consider. Or at least think about, for the next meeting, if we could. Have a simpler process to do these types of projects. More, more similar to the site plan review that we do for these ground-mounted solar residential units. And we could write that so that the neighbors do get notified of the meeting. It's not, it's not a public hearing, it's not a special permit, but the neighbors are all notified in the same manner as they would be for a special permit. And they can come in and express their views, and we can take those views into account. But we're not going through that full special permit, so anyway. Just something to think about, I'll, I'll bring it up. Just something to think about, I'll I'll bring it up at the next meeting and um maybe have have thought about it a little more and fleshed out some of my ideas.
Yeah, I'm I'm certainly open to thinking about that, Jeff, I would that, would what you're proposing actually entail a an amendment to the bylaws?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it it would be an amendment that if we agreed on it, because it's a good idea, we would develop it and and bring it to town meeting.
I see, okay.
And until then, we have to do them this way.
Right, right. Okay.
Alrighty, so um. Any other business that anyone has, anything anyone wants to say?
No, not tonight.
Okay, then I'll.
Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Three hundred and sixty to go.
It's our first business meeting, cool.
I was gonna say, first meeting down.
Yeah. So do I hear?
Thank you, everyone.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-one?
Hey, motion made by Mary David, do I hear a second?
And I'll second that.
Okay, and I'll call the roll. Uh Mary David?
Hi.
Don Airstuck?
Hi.
And Jeff Lacy's and I. Okay, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye-bye.